I am calling this Board of Education meeting to order at 7:32. Please stand if you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Official meeting notification, Mr. Stausland.
Yes. So, public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the GSDWI.org website, as well as Cable Access Channel 96.
Roll call.
Medved.
Here.
Barney.
Here.
Reineman here.
Loth.
Here.
Borden absent excused.
Pollak.
Here.
Before we move on to citizen comments, Mr. Stausland would like to bring up a--
Agenda approval?
I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda, I checked it out.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Go ahead, Tracy.
Second.
Any discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, now, before we move on to citizen comments, we had a couple people sign to talk about policy. There's a couple of policies that have been talked about the last couple of meetings, and I just wanted Mr. Stausland to update that we have not had the Policy Committee meeting yet, and why that was.
Sure. So, I shared this with the-- this information with the board after our last meeting, and I thought I'd just share it because I think some people will want to comment on this, and it's Policy 5310, which we will talk about on August 17th at our-- at our policy meeting. But the-- this-- this particular policy, the history of it is Neola, who is the, I would say, the school-- school districts across the country warehouse of policies, brought this or created this-- this policy, and then in 2011, the Germantown School District adopted this policy. And the truth is, there haven't been updates or changes to this policy since 2011. But what I found out is that this was put in place back in 2007 with Neola because it is supposed to act as an assurance to parents and students that school officials will not be engaging in such examinations listed, you know, in this policy without prior notification. So, the parent and student has the ability to object. And there's also another policy, 5320, on immunizations that says that exemptions shall be granted for medical, religious, or personal conviction. So, I think the bottom line is, we-- we do not and will not do anything that-- to a student that-- that the parents or student won't know ahead of time. And the reason we haven't ever sent notices out for this, because the policy says the district will send a notification annually, because we don't do any of these acts or examinations, we don't send anything because we don't-- we don't do them. So, I hope that-- that helps clarify. And what-- what the Policy Committee will look at is how can-- how can we take what is in here and further explain it so people understand that's the intent? Because that's the-- truly, the intent of this was put in as an assurance to parents and-- and students.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sure.
I think it would provide-- it would help me out a little bit, because I'm in the Policy Committee, of provide more clarity in terms of, okay, when would we actually use this? What examples?
We-- we wouldn't.
Because then I would say, then maybe, why don't we just get rid of it? So, but we could talk about that next week, though.
Yep.
But thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll start calling out names, and I'll call the person and then the person on deck. Ellen Gatri, and then Kevin Curtis.
Can you start my clock, please? Thank you.
I am.
We are asking the Germantown School District to please continue to make masking children a parental choice before mass exodus takes place in this school district. As many of you are aware, the CDC ignored 17 months' worth of data to feed into the growing and unwarranted panic over the Delta variant of COVID-19, and again, recommended the wearing of masks indoors regardless of vaccination status. In the 17 months since the pandemic began last March, there have been fewer than 300 COVID-related deaths among those 17 and under, averaging about 204 per year. By way of comparison, over the past eight years, the flu has killed more than double, averaging of 456 children per year. And oddly enough, we have never masked our children during the flu pandemic. However, on the flip side, a study of nearly 26,000 schoolchildren showed that approximately 68% had problems while wearing masks in schools. These included irritability, headaches, difficulty concentrating, less happiness, reluctance to go to school, difficulty breathing, impaired learning, and drowsiness, and fatigue. In addition, a research letter published earlier this year in the Journal of American Medical Association for Pediatrics found that wearing masks caused children to inhale too much carbon dioxide. This is simply unsafe. As a result, 38 parent advocacy groups across the state of Wisconsin have rejected local and national calls for new lockdowns and enforcing masking of their children in an open letter to President Biden and Governor Tony Evers. I will read the pertinent parts of this letter to you. President Biden and Governor Evers, we represent over 20,000 Wisconsin families across 38 parent advocacy groups, and we are here to inform you that your uninvited reign of destruction over the children of Wisconsin is finished. We have watched the last weeks unfold in abject horror, observing our government institutions and leaders failing our children at every turn again. Your renewed calls for lockdowns, enforcing mask mandates, and masking in schools is not rooted in science; it is objectively cruel to the most vulnerable in society, our children. We believe that you are in fact aware of this and continue to play political games with our children despite our efforts to work with you over the past 12 months. We are here to inform you that this ends today. Effective immediately, we will not mask our children in schools. Simply put, they are not your children. They are ours, and they too are Americans with rights. They are our responsibility and are most beloved; they are not yours. We applaud and support the school boards, businesses, and localities that have respected our parental choice. We anticipate and appreciate their continued support of our right to choose what is best for our children and individual families. We are strong. We are united. We are in control. We will never and-- we have never and will never co-parent with the government or the local school board. Thank you for your time. Please continue to make masks a parental choice in Germantown.
Thank you.
Kevin Curtis, and then Teresa Schneider.
My name is Kevin Curtis. I'm a parent of two students at Germantown School District, one at Kinyline and one going into early childhood education at Rockfield. I already sent an email to all of you, including asking you to put masks back-- mask mandates back in the K-8 schools. The reason I ask this is that all of these students at the K-5 schools and half the students at Kennedy are unable to get the vaccine at this time. This is the number-one way to protect our students, is to get the vaccine. However, since these students cannot get it, they are-- the best-- the next best mask, the next best thing to do is to require masks for all these students. I've already shown-- I've already sent you information about-- about school districts in other countries who have had masks, who have had outbreaks with the Delta variant. I've already shown you how summer camps throughout the United States have had outbreaks of the Delta variant infecting all their students, all their kids under-- under 17. Today, I'm also going to bring a couple other things I've just recently seen, since this has been the first week of school for many school districts down south. In the metro Atlanta area, there are already not over 900 cases of the Delta variant in the school districts. That includes students and staff. In Indiana, 300 student cases alone. In Washington County, Tennessee, a county very similar to ours in size, there are four-- there are 41 students and staff positive for COVID and 155 in quarantine already. This has only been the first week or two at most of these school districts, and yet we have these very high numbers, including knocking out large populations of the student and staff population. This is dangerous. We need to do what's best for our students. That is, we want the students to be back in schools. We want the students to be there. The best way to do that is with masks for the K-8 schools. The CDC guidelines say that everyone should be wearing masks. My own employer is asking that everyone wear masks, including those vaccinated, just to prevent the spread of Delta-- of the Delta variant. This is very dangerous, and we need to take action to it to prevent an illness or shutdown of the Germantown School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Snyder, and then Krista Ewart.
So, I am addressing the board about Policy 5310. I appreciate you speaking on it first. So, the general question behind me was, if we're not using it, why is it in there? Why is it even there? Okay? The policy states that the school has authorization to inject, insert, and size our students as long as the parents are informed at least once a year that this may happen but is not date-specific. For anyone saying this is about EpiPens and that kind of thing, that's Policy 5330. That's not this one. This seems to be falling right into place with the Wisconsin Department of Health's new guidelines about masking vaccinations and school-based testing that over 300 districts are actively using as of last week, according to the Health Department website. I'm standing here tonight to tell you that under no circumstances will this district or any other be inserting, incising, or injecting anything into my child, as well as zero private bodily parts being exposed to anyone. Not happening. If this occurs, there will be civil lawsuits, not just me, everybody behind me. Okay? Our children have the right to a public education. You can see the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. Let me say that again. Our children have the right to a public education-- education, not healthcare. Okay? The school needs to stay in their lane when it comes to this. The education doesn't-- the education does not include being medical guinea pigs or test subjects for the federal or local government. We have expected right to privacy, and we plan on using it. It is no one's business who is vaccinated and who isn't, and segregation of those who are and aren't is illegal. We are demanding this Policy 5310 be voided immediately and taken off the plate. Secondly, please trust us as adults to keep our kids home if they're sick. We did it all last year, and we'll do it again. The quarantine of healthy kids was detrimental to our kids' mental health, as well as their education. And for what? The amount of kids who actually got sick while stuck at home was almost zero, and that's according to our school nurse and all her data. Please do not make the same mistakes this year and take away another educational year from our kids. Please, as parents and elected officials, please hold strong on the optional masking for next year. We don't want to pull our kids from this district, but if we're backed into a corner, we are. Our children will be attending school this year. If we choose to mask them, we will. If we choose to let them breathe fresh air, we will. If we choose as a family to vaccinate, we will. Under no circumstances will we let a government agency or a school board mandate what is put into our children, and we will not allow the district to test or vaccinate our children on school property. Let me be very clear. We will not co-parent with the government or schools. The past decades of parents blindly trusting the school boards to educate our children are over. We're here, and we're involved. Thank you.
Kristi Ewart, and then Kelly Beekler.
So, Bob, you actually stole part of the beginning of my speech in the Personnel Committee when you spoke to the policies that you wanted added to the employee handbook. So, I appreciate that. I hope that the board moves forward with the Policy Committee and reevaluates that fourth point, but I applaud adding those three points into policy to show unity instead of segregation in our school. And this leads me to, tonight, you're tasked to discuss and possibly pass the SEL curriculum for the Kennedy Middle School. Many of you have questioned the curriculum and have taken more time to review it. Thank you for taking time to pause and do that. That's what we've been asking for, to be intentional with our curriculum. I truly appreciate it. As I'm sure you're all aware, and the reason why you took the pause is SEL has been used as a catalyst for moving critical race theory into the school, either through framework, using other terms such as anti-racist, anti-bias, culturally responsive teaching. But I think now that you're on board with the policies that we've been asking for, those can be used as a guide rail for the curriculum moving forward, to ensure that we are intentionally teaching our kids things that we want to teach them. But I want-- I want to say that even if this SEL curriculum looks good, looks clean, looks like it's what we intentionally want to teach, the website for Second Step is not. It leads down the path of teaching socialjustice.org. It goes down the path of critical race theory ideologies. So, I ask that if you choose to approve the curriculum as it's laid out currently, that you also make an intentional note that what's on the website and the links are not approved, that what you have actually reviewed and read is what's approved, and that does not contain everything that's on the Second Step website. Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to us and taking the steps that you have already. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Kelly, and then Jody Graff.
Good evening. I would like to start out with the most terrifying sentence in the English language. We are from the government, and we are here to help. And if that doesn't terrify you, it should. I want you guys to think about everything that I'm going to say after this with the context of that sentence. Once a government provides you with basic utilities, the government then decides when to turn them on and off. Once a government pays for all of your education, the government can then control the education and career you get to have. Once a government provides you with food, the government can decide how much or if you get to eat. Once the government pays for your housing, they control where you live. Once the government pays for your healthcare and medicine, the government can control whether or not you are valuable enough to allow to live. Once government gets you to agree to gun control, you have no way to prevent the government from doing any of those things listed above. I recently watched a video about a lady that was speaking about the Nazi takeover in Austria. To say history is repeating itself would be a gross understatement with the things that we are seeing nowadays. Right here, right now, we're headed for our next civil war. We're fighting for our country. We're fighting for our freedoms. We, the parents, are leading a revolution, a revolution to stop the woke culture. We are becoming woke ourselves, but not in the way that the government will like. We are taking back our country to ensure the continued security of our freedoms. Ronald Reagan once said, "We're one generation away from communism, socialism." I speak for myself and many other parents when I say that we will not allow our children to wear masks. We will not let the school COVID test our children. We will not let the schools vaccinate our children. And most of all, our children will not be discriminated against for any of the above reasons. Just a little side note about the vaccine that everybody's lauding right now, because I do have a bit of time. I question it because of the motives of the people that are involved in this vaccine. It doesn't have to be political, but it's become very political. Fauci holds patents for this vaccine. Bill Gates has been videoed discussing mental changes of extremist behavior using vaccines, and it deposits protein spikes within the capillary blood vessels that are to fight this virus. I don't negate the fact that there is a virus. However, these protein spikes are then collecting blood-- red blood cells, and it's creating blood clots. And it's very alarming when I see cardiology receiving referrals at an alarming rate, adults, young people that have gotten the vaccine, because the clotting is causing damage to their cardiovascular system, causing strokes, causing kidney damage. They estimate that potentially up to 60% of the people that have received the vaccine could be dead within a couple of years because of clotting and cardiovascular issues.
Thank you. Jody Graff, and then Ed Hertz.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight as a unified voice of all parents who wish to be the only ones in power to give consent on behalf of their children, which of course should be every single responsible and loving parent on the planet. We must all honor ourselves in doing what is right for us and our kids as individuals, not as a collective group, as not one single one of us are the same, and we should celebrate that daily. As a community, as a district, we must stop allowing anything to divide us. We must agree that we are allowed our individual liberty and freedom of choice. I read this on 4/26, and I'm here with this same message, as it will never change, and the district needs to stay consistent as well. Please don't turn your back on your decision for optional masks. Give these kids the innocence and right to in-person education that they deserve. Freedom is freedom is freedom. Mandates violate fundamental human rights, notably the right to prior free and informed consent for medical interventions. In a free society, everyone should have complete power and control over their own bodies. I urge you to do all in your power to never again go back down from the democratic principles upon which this country was founded. Maintain mask choice. Maintain zero toleration of segregation, discrimination, or bullying on any topic, to include anyone's decision to mask or not mask. The last weeks of school show you where the overwhelming majority of your community's parents and students stand. So, please do not be distracted by a few saying otherwise. Allow families and teachers who want to mask to absolutely do so. But we cannot want a choice to wear a mask and rob another the choice to not wear one, or the choice to experiment with vaccinations or not. Never mandate vaccinations and start giving parents transparency. Every decision over a person's body needs to be their own decision. It is not okay that our healthcare workers are actively being demanded to inject themselves with an experiment, and we must never mandate such of our teacher, staff, or students. And then I'll end as I legit hold back tears of gratitude. Sincerest thanks for implementing nondiscrimination in the handbook. Thank you all for that, and echoing policy to mirror that as well. Thank you so much for listening. Your jobs are not easy, and you do it with grace, and we appreciate you listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ed Hertz, and then Kristen Barr.
Hi. Hello. I would like to speak in term-- for the mask mandate. I'm not for this. I really believe it should be voluntary. I know my grandson, when he wears a mask, it-- the communication is just not there, and he's so much relieved when it's off. I do want to share something from a science standpoint. Just to give you my background, I'm retired 40 years as a mechanical engineer, HVAC being my specialty. In the HVAC industry, we have to specify air filtration systems, and this is basically an air filter. Basically, it filters whatever you breathe in and removes it. The virus particles, and you can look this up on ASHRAY, which is a national organization, the particle size are so small. To make an analogy, it's like throwing a marble and expecting to go through-- the filter being a chain-link fence, expecting the chain-link fence to stop the particle, a marble. It's physically not possible. So, like I say, this basically acts like a filter. The science is there. It's not effective. That's all I wanted to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Barr, and then James Fisher.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you. This is my first board meeting. I'm a little nervous. My mom was a board member while growing up. You guys have a tough job, so thank you. Oh, okay. To start, I'd like to quote my grandpa, and he always told me, "You don't call a plumber for an electrical issue." You've heard evidence and research from people today who are not medical doctors or scientists. I, however, do have the credentials to present to you the actual and factual data in regards to COVID. I have a PhD from Medical College of Wisconsin, win microbiology, genetics, and immunology. I have over 15 years' experience in the biomedical field, and I have extreme concerns over our children's safety at Germantown Schools for this upcoming school year. Last May, the school board decided to make masks optional, and a lot has changed since then. Back in May, the original COVID strains were not as contagious or infectious, but the crazy thing about viruses is that they mutate, and they mutate to survive. We are witnessing that real time. As you are aware, the original strain has mutated to what we call the Delta strain. The strain-- the strain is much worse. Delta is 200% more transmissible and results in to up to 1,000 times higher viral load. This is worse than smallpox. The Delta strain has mutated to allow it to be transmitted by those vaccinated, and now is a top 10 cause death for adolescents in the U.S. Mortality is not only the negative outcome. Health decisions estimate that anywhere from 10% to 45% of children under the age of 12 infected with SARS-- or with COVID will experience long-haul symptoms. Recent studies are showing brain shrinkage in adolescents, which means-- basically means brain cell death, which is permanent and cannot be restored. Brain cells cannot replicate. Guidelines change over time because viruses change over time. The CDC and American Pediatrics Association have changed guidelines, changed guidelines to change with the virus. Both entities are recommending masks be worn indoors by schools regardless of vaccination status. Study and study-- study after study shows the effectiveness of a layered approach in schools, and that masks work. This is not a debate. This is fact. I would like to quote a woman who recently told me, "Removal of masks doesn't make the virus go away. The removal of virus will make masks go away." So, I'm asking us all to work together toward the common goal of eliminating the virus in our community so we can get back to our normal mask-free world. At the very least, wearing masks will buy us time until the vaccines are available to our children under 12. Once again, I am asking you to listen to the experts. I urge the school board to mandate masks in school. Protecting children must be a high priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Fisher, and then Jenny Price.
I came here today on a whim, heard that we were going over some policies that I was unaware of and wasn't prepared, like most people, with a speech. However, my question is, policies laden with good intentions are the scariest of them all. Even though it's not something that we practice, and you stated that it wasn't something that we were going to do, my next question to the board would be, how do we remove this from the policy? Then, if it's not something that none of us want as far as injections or private parts being shown or anything like that. So, my question to the board, then, is, we need to have this removed from the policy and do away with the good intention of that policy? That's all.
Thank you. Jenny Price, and then Sarah Larson.
Um, Brett, you did mention the policy, and I appreciate that, but I do want to speak about it. It was brought up briefly, a couple of-- by a couple of parents at the last board meeting, and it seemed like you had no idea that it even existed. It does exist. It's disgusting. It needs to be discarded. Why in the world would the school need to make incisions into my children? Why in the world would the-- would the school need to inject anything into my child? With the exception of EpiPens, insulin, et cetera, different policies, why would the school and what would the school need to insert into my children? Why in the world would the school ever need to examine my children's private parts? What is happening? Do any of you know, because it seems pretty fishy to me and a lot of other parents, that this policy was updated in October of 2020, right when COVID vaccinations were ramping up? I'm here to tell you I don't consent. I do not consent to the school-- I do not consent to the school examining my children's private body parts. I do not consent to the school inserting anything into any of my children's body cavities. I do not consent to the school making any sort of incision into my children's bodies, and I certainly 100% do not consent to the school injecting anything into my children. Hear me loud, hear me clear, I do not consent. The next thing I'd like to address is masks. I know that they are optional. I am hoping that the board keeps it that way. We have seen you flip-flop on decisions in the past. We hope this is not one of those times. If you choose to put a mask requirement back in place, I'm putting everyone on notice, my children will not comply with wearing face coverings of any kind. Not now, not next month, not ever. They will not be sequestered to the corner of their classrooms, segregated from all of their peers like they were last school year. They will receive an equal education as all of the other students. I will pick them up at the end of the day after a full day of schooling, excited to see them, just as I have done in the last four years. We, the parents, are sick and tired of the utter nonsense and the charade that the masks are. I'm responsible for my children's health, not anyone else. You will not be held liable if my child gets sick. You just won't. I am not alone in my feelings, as you hear tonight. There are hundreds of parents that agree with me. They are too afraid to speak up in fear of retaliation towards their kids, so I'm speaking for all of them and their children. So I hope you're listening, and I really hope you truly hear us. We are not going away. I do not, nor will I ever co-parent with you. Never. They are my children, my choice. Their bodies, still my choice until they're 18. You wanted more parent involvement in school board meetings, and now you have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Larson, and on deck is Alex Harden.
Hi, everyone. My first item relates to the last board meeting where the report out was done on the usage and finances of the pool and fitness center. That certainly was concerning, though we realized that those were not going to be money-making areas. More needs to be done to promote it. Just as the PAC director is responsible for filling this facility, alerting you to maintenance items, the athletic director was tasked with that. And if you recall, at one of the first board meetings after those facilities opened, the athletic director was standing right here talking about free passes to start promoting the facility, and then it seemed as though it just dropped off. That needs to be revisited within her job description, because I think though we aren't going to be moneymakers in that area, we need to be closer to breaking even because we need it financially, as well as the community needs to have the visibility and access to those facilities. My next item concerns open records requests, and I guess you probably would not be aware that on an April 2021 department head meeting at the high school, there was an agenda item surrounding open records requests. And the subcategories, one in particular, could easily infer that maybe coaching was done on how to avoid having your content be part of an open records request. I certainly hope that would not be the case, but it may be something you might want to examine further, given that transparency is such a huge thing at this point in time. I'd like to thank the Personnel Committee for adding those points into the employee handbook. Bravo. Thank you for the discussion. It was very good. I hope to see the board go ahead and affirm that motion at the rest of the meeting, and as always, thanks for all that you're doing for the district. Thanks.
Alex Harden, and on deck is Hope Unger.
Hello, Alex Harden from Colgate. I'd just like to call to attention another attempt by Director of Teaching and Learning, Brenda O'Brien, to cram even more of her radical social justice activism into the kids' classrooms. Now, given that her past attempts, as seen in the extremely well circulated fall of 2020 emails, were basically ignored by most of the board, unfortunately, and certainly by her boss, Superintendent Preston Slend, it seems worthwhile to go over this latest effort. So first, Ms. O'Brien indicated that the Social Emotional Learning Program, SEL, from secondstep.org, will or might be paid for by a grant from the National Education Association, the NEA. That's the teachers' union, for those of you in Rio Linda. Second, Ms. O'Brien tried to pass this SEL program off as sort of an innocuous, kind of Barney the Dinosaur type of program, simply teaching kids to be kind, you know, I love you, you love me kind of stuff. This is interesting because as a very progressive lobby organization, the NEA, significant portion of the grants and programs listed on their website have to do with leftist political, union, social justice, or Marxist Black Lives Matter activism. In fact, right on the secondstep.org website, they themselves have resources that will, quote, "Help you implement social emotional learning, SEL, in a way that builds on students' cultural assets," end quote, "critically examines systems of power." So, "systems of power." If anyone has not been paying attention for the last several months with this whole critical race theory nonsense, "systems of power," that's the evil white man putting down the black man. That's what they mean by that. That's teaching black people that they are inherently oppressed and white people that they are inherently oppressors. It's abhorrent and absolutely sickening. So I'd ask if those goals really align with the Germantown community? You know, is the message that you've been receiving from us, you know, the parents over the last four months, really, you know, "Hey, please give my kids more and more left-wing lunacy?" I don't think so. So first of all, please, I'm asking you to stop this ridiculous SEL program. Even if this particular one is a decent program, it is so obviously a Trojan horse for more of Ms. O'Brien's garbage, to put it charitably. Second, and I'm dead serious, when on earth will you pull in the reins on Brenda O'Brien? This is at least the third time in the past year that she has tried to bring her personal social justice warrior ideals and demagoguery into our kids' classrooms. It's completely inappropriate, and honestly, I think it seems past time that she be shown the door. Thank you.
Hope Unger, and on deck is Gail Trapp.
Hi. I didn't really plan on speaking here today, but after hearing a few people speak, I just wanted to put in my two cents. Now, you don't have to have a PhD to know that science is real. I also am a, I have a bachelor's degree in complementary and alternative health, and I have done much of my own research. I have read a book in the past called When Healing Becomes a Crime. In that book, I learned when the Rockefellers took over the Medical Association, and they learned that they could make money from petroleum drugs, hence pharmaceutical companies became the big moneymaker, and all other healthcare modalities, naturopaths, herbal medicines, any kind of doctor that went against the grain of allopathic medicine was considered a quack and were threatened to have their licenses taken away. I don't believe masks are working. I don't believe that they stop a virus from spreading. What they do do is make you, I said doo-doo, sorry. What they do do is keep bacteria in you, and you keep breathing that over and over, and that tends to make people sick with bacterial pneumonia and bacterial infections in the lungs. Okay, I'm so nervous, I'm shaking. Anyways, I pulled my kid out of school last year because I did not want him wearing a muzzle over his face, because I wanted him to breathe freely. Sorry. He had a really hard time not being in school, and he really wants to go back to school. So I please encourage you to make masks optional, because I would love for my child to be socially engaged with his friends again. He missed out so much over the last year and a half not being in a classroom with his peers. Masking our children is not effective, okay? Our children are not spreading the virus back and forth between themselves. There are plenty of studies that show this information, and I believe in science, and I believe science is real, but I also believe that there is an agenda and that science can be manipulated, and right now, I believe our government is manipulating the science and hiding the science, because there are plenty of doctors who are speaking out about this. But they are being silenced and muted and hidden and deplatformed. So please, please, make masking optional. Thank you.
Gail Trapp. I'm a little bit shorter than her.
And on deck is Vonda Downs.
With concerns of the COVID Delta variant on the rise in the communities, and many schools are backpedaling and have reinstituted mask mandates, mitigation strategies, and quarantining, I'm asking the board to please hold firm in the decision that you made in May and to continue to allow masks to be optional and to not mandate the COVID-19 vaccine for our students. While the past eighteen months have been very challenging for all of us, the changes in the school environment have had the biggest impact on our students. A recent report consulting firm McKinsey &amp; Company reported that the impact of the COVID-19 mitigation strategies for the 2020 has led to students on an average losing five months of math and four months of reading education. These numbers are even worse amongst students of lower socioeconomic status and the students of color. Thirty-five percent of parents report that they are very or extremely worried about their students' mental health. The ER visits for suicide attempts rose by 51% amongst teenage girls. Students need to be in school. They need to have less time on their devices and more time in the classroom to interact with their peers. They should be allowed the option to not wear a mask, as masks make it more difficult for students to form human connection and treat each other with kindness and dignity. The COVID infection and transmission rate amongst children is the lowest of any aid group. I think it's like 99.97% that they're going to actually be seriously injured from it. They have an overall relatively low risk. The vaccine is readily available for any and all staff members who would like to receive it. We need to recognize the benefits and the normalcy that school provides to our students, and we should not deprive them of another academic year with these mitigation strategies being the driving force behind their education. And to kind of also speak to some of the things that have already been said, I get more confused every single day when I look at the media. The mainstream media is totally brainwashing everybody that listens to it. This is definitely a political agenda that is going on within our country at this point. There's so much hypocrisy that I just want to vomit on a daily basis when I listen to things. You know, you have the people that have the vaccine, now they're the carriers of this Delta variant, so they're the ones that are the super-spreaders. Okay, well, did you tell everybody to get the vaccine? Well, yeah, that's what you're pushing. Children are not the carriers of these things, you know, obviously within the adults. Masks aren't working. Particles are way too small. They go right through, doesn't do anything for kids. All it does is make them sick. And, you know, the hypocrisy that we are seeing within this political agenda is absolutely mind-boggling, and it's brainwashing people. So stay noted masks this next year, keep it optional. Thank you.
Hi, Vonda Downs, Germantown. I don't want to go into the science of everything. I think a lot was said about science. I did want to talk to a couple of things that weren't mentioned on this policy 5310. But sort of leading up to that, just in real-time experience regarding the current situation and some of the news and all of the data and everything, what I can tell you from my own experience is that my patients, I am having a lot of patients post-vaccine calling saying, "I'm positive and I'm sick. What do I do?" I also have a neighbor who is in RN freighter medical floor, and she told me today that 100% of the nursing staff are refusing vaccination because of their experiences treating post-vaccine patients who have many medical problems and are not diagnosable. They also have a lot of post-vaccine COVID cases. So I don't think she's lying to me. So I think, you know, we have to respect the complexity of the situation. In regard to this policy, it was revised October 12, 20. So I don't know who revised it or if parents knew that it was revised, but it's concerning, and the wording is very concerning. It says, sorry, I have to get this up again. "The board shall directly notify the parents of students, at least annually, at the beginning of the school year, of the specific or approximate dates during the school year when any non-emergency invasive physical examination or screening is scheduled." The term "non-emergency," what does that mean? Who declares an emergency? And the term "invasive physical examination," as everyone has said here, is really bizarre. So I can't understand who would ever put this in any school policy. I can't understand who revised it in October of 20. I don't understand what you mean by "non-emergency." When is it an emergency? There are so many things wrong with this particular policy and the intents behind it. So I appreciate your time and your respect for all the diverse opinions and experiences presented here today.
Thank you all. Moving on to item four, approval of the minutes, July 19, 2021, Board of Education, I have a motion.
Move approval of July 19, 2021, Board of Education Minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, a couple of things. Item 11, the acronym CTE is not defined. Item 13, the acronym ACP is not defined. And item 16, the acronym SEL is not defined. So if we could please update those three items?
Sure. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item five, reports and information items returned to school update. Mr. Slend.
Yep, thank you. So this is a report, so there's no, you know, decision or action on this. I'm just sharing, again, repeating a lot of what we said, or what was said at the last board meeting around our return to school. As shared last time, sorry, you know, we'll approach the year knowing we potentially have to be flexible and adaptive to our changing surroundings. And, but the current plan right now is masks are optional. Notices to families if their child is in close contact with a positive case. Students will be in-person for learning. We do not plan on offering vaccines or COVID testing in our school. Families will be asked to monitor their child's health and keep them home if they're not feeling well. If a child does test positive, we ask that they get a negative test or wait out the quarantine time. And if a class or grade level reaches a high absentee rate for illness, we'll notify families. Current board policy is if 30% absentee rate is breached for the same type of illness, that the policy says we will look at closing down a class, grade, or school. And then our instruction for this school year is we will not be doing concurrent, meaning we will not have a teacher with kids at home that are virtual while there's kids in the classroom and trying to teach both platforms at one time. If students are absent for any length of time, they'll work out a learning plan with the teacher. One of the plans is it will not be synchronous, meaning if there's three kids from a third grade class, and someone might say, "Well, can't they just, can't we just turn the camera and let them hear what's going on?" We don't think that's the best way. The, we'll share this with staff when they return in a couple of weeks, but that they say- set a way to communicate with that child with our learning platforms that we have. A lot of our communication is done electronically, but, you know, we're recommending that a teacher would set a specific time to log in with that child, almost like a phone call, but do it with video, to help explain anything. So, let's say the teacher has a prep at nine o'clock in the morning that they would, they could connect with that child at that time, or whatever time the teacher would choose to fit into their schedule. And again, it's almost like going back two years ago, that if a child was out, if they were ill, you figured out how they could do their work. And also, if they're ill, ill, we don't expect them to be doing work either. We want them just to rest and be healthy. The other piece that is not in here, but it's in the next slide, is the quarantining piece, and that's something, again, if we are able to determine if someone was a close contact with a positive case, we'll let the families know, the families have the option to decide if they want to quarantine or if they want to take them to be tested, or whatever they want to do. We leave that in the hands of the families, and we would just ask that then they would also just monitor if their child starts exhibiting some symptoms. And something that really I would like to use moving forward, and this was more, and I shared this with our school nurse, and it's really, it's a guidance, it's not a hard metric. This may be hard to see, but this will be going out to families tomorrow, also with some, just more information of stuff I just shared in that previous slide. So, Washington County Health is using a different metric this year than they did last year around burden rates, and so they've basically said, "We're going to do a seven-day average, and there'll be a number from one through one hundred," and it can mean different things. And currently, if you look at their website, we're at a thirty, which would put us in the moderate risk mitigation. And for us, it lists face coverings optional, contract tracing and communication of close contacts, that's all that's in that box. If you go to the red box all the way to the bottom, the high-risk mitigation strategies in there is face masks are recommended, which means there still would be optional. There would be school-wide communication, it would just say, "County line parents are, we're in, we're at a hundred," or whatever it may be, and really, that notices just to let families know that, okay, our numbers are up, and we're using numbers about, specific to our school, not our community, and just to be more alert and looking for, you know, checking your child to make sure that they're well. And then, contact tracing is the same around quarantining, and the intermittent closures is on there, but that's meaning if we're to that point in that red, we will probably be reaching our policy of thirty percent anyway. So, it doesn't mean it's automatic, it just means we'll have to look at that and make some considerations. Just like we did this last year, we had situations across the district, we had to shut down a second grade or shut down an eighth grade. If it gets, and that's that adaptive and flexible piece, but the goal is keeping our students in school as long as we can. So, and also, I reported last time that area schools, schools in our CISA One, that almost all of them were planning mass optional. That has been disrupted over the last three weeks. There's, schools are taking different approaches to it. Some are, and there are several board meetings tonight, so I'm not sure, and I didn't want to, I didn't want to, I was going to put the graphic up that shows all the schools and what they're doing, but I know it won't be accurate because so many things have changed with some of those schools. But at our August 23rd meeting, I'll share what I can confirm at that time. Some are looking at masks in motion, some are looking at K-5 only, some are using their own data metrics to decide what to do, which I would say that's more or less where we're falling into, is that we have our policy of thirty percent absentee rate, and also, there's just so many different variations of how schools are starting the school year out. And someone did mention tonight, and CDC did come out and recommend masks indoors regardless of vaccine status. I'm on a call tomorrow with Washington Health, with area superintendent, and to hear where they stand, and I'll share that with the board once I know, but really, this is where we're at and the information we have at this time. Any questions from the board? Yep.
Thank you for sharing this information. I think it's extremely important, and we're not done with this conversation, I know that. But getting back to the vaccine, what percent of our staff has been vaccinated? I think it was eighty percent last year we were talking about that.
Yep, and that's for people who have reported to the nurse that they, people, we're not, no one's required to say that you've had the vaccine, but of those that reported, it was about eighty percent last year.
And we're not mandating vaccines?
Nope.
And I don't think the board will ever go down that path of...
No, I don't think, I don't believe we can.
Of those that did let us know, eighty percent.
Yep, so I would guess it's higher than that.
Great, thank you.
Just to clarify too, Mr. Stausland, nowhere in there does it say that masks will be required at some point if the level gets too high, our cases, our burden gets too high, we will highly recommend masks, but we will not require that.
Yeah, it'll only be required for board presidents.
Well, of course.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say that, no.
Okay, moving on to item six, building committee updates from August 9th, 2021, Mr. Paul.
Thank you. I'll try to make this quick, there's a lot of items that Mr. Erickson had given us an update on. A couple of those items to mention is that there were some chimney repairs at a couple of the different schools. He also gave us a GSF update, that's our maintenance company that we're working with. They've been doing a lot of work at all of the different schools, they're still in process with going through all of their checklists as far as getting everything prepped for the start of the school year. He did note, Mr. Erickson did mention that there were going to be some classrooms that will not have gotten the full deep clean as far as the floor and the waxing, but he assured us that the actual cleaning of the room and any other sort of mitigation for that will be done in time for school. A lot of stuff going on here at the high school, we got an update on the pool deck and the ongoing discussions regarding the tile issues that we've experienced, and those conversations will continue. He pointed out that there's a semi truck over near the track. The track work has been delayed, but the expectation is that they will begin the work this week, weather permitting, and they'll work around any of the activities that occur at the field. The big piece to mention is roof leaks, that there are some new roof leaks over at County Line, and several at MacArthur that are being addressed as soon as possible, and he did give us an update on the PAC leak as well, those, that research will continue as far as trying to find out exactly what the problems are. Sounds like some of the issues were thought to be resolved, however, there still seems to be some minor leaks. Also, in the committee, we did have a couple of positive recommendations that we were sending over to the finance committee regarding the administration building digital control upgrade, which in a previous meeting, we asked for the crew to get us a new quote on the work rather than spreading it out over several years to kind of just do it all at once. And Mr. Erickson did point out that going down that route probably saved us in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, and also, we had a positive recommendation to the finance committee for district compartmentalization doors, work that needed to be done as well. That is all.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to seven, finance committee, Mr. Lo.
Yes, the finance committee met earlier this evening. We consented to pay vouchers for, it was a shorter period of time, but from last month through the beginning of this month. Brittany gave us her June variance report, and it was quite complicated, but I think the highlight is a surplus of approximately six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Not all of that, but some of that will go to fund balance, so that's really good news for the district. Next item was mentioned a little bit by Tracy. The fire doors that close during a lockdown at the schools must be rewired to close independently from the fire alarm system when a lockdown is activated. So, I have a motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to award Stanley Security a contract not to exceed twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars funded from the Building and Grounds Department Fund 10 budget to rewire the compartmentalization doors on fire alarm system to work independently with the access control system.
Okay, thank you. That's coming to the board with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Okay, and the last item was on the full board agenda, item 7C. We bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to purchase Schoolology Learning Management Services for an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and five cents.
Okay, that also comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And that's it.
Thank you, Mike. Personnel committee, Mr. Barney.
Yes, Personnel Committee met earlier this evening, we've got quite a few things to bring forward to you. First thing we talked about was enrollment update, so if you look in the background, that'll show you that we had two classes that were in the red. The administration had new information as of tonight, saying that we have actually an additional grade that's also in the red. Because of that, the committee brings forward a motion to move forward with recruiting for three FTEs, be first grade at MAC, kindergarten at Rockfield, and kindergarten at MAC.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Do you have the actual numbers for that kindergarten classes for MAC, if we broke it out into four groups?
Yeah, I did a quick calculation, it would have been like twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six without the, or without the add?
Sure.
Sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six. With the add, it's nineteen is the average.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
All right, next we discuss the employee handbook. We have several motions regarding the employee handbook. The first is for the support staff section, specifically removing the phrase, "Such leaves shall be noncumulative except after three years of employment." So, the committee brings forward a motion to update the support staff section of that handbook.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alabstein?
One extension, thank you.
Okay, the next piece for the handbook is under the vacation section in the support staff section. The administration has asked for the phrase, "After the first year of employment," be deleted. So, the recommendation from the committee is to approve that change, which will transition to a July 1st allocation for vacation.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alabstein?
Okay.
All right, the handbook also shows the schedule for the normal workday, including teacher and student arrival times and student and teacher release times. Due to change in schedule at schools this year, the administration has requested that we update that section of the handbook. So, the committee makes a recommendation that under the normal workday section in the teaching staff section, change the normal workday as presented.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Anything else?
Yes, also regarding the employee handbook, the committee brings forward a motion to add the following to the employee handbook. Germantown School District prohibits the use and/or practice of any pedagogy, resource materials, or staff professional development activities within the district that would compel or direct students or staff to personally affirm, adopt, or adhere to any of the following. One, that any sex, race, ethnicity, religion, color, ability, age, or national origin is inherently superior or inferior. Two, that individuals should be adversely treated by virtue of sex, race, ethnicity, religion, color, ability, age, or national origin. And three, that individuals by virtue of sex, race, ethnicity, religion, color, ability, age, or national origin are inherently responsible for the actions committed by another member of the same sex, race, ethnicity, religion, color, ability, age, or national origin.
Okay, that comes to the board with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
All right, then we moved on to the activities and athletic handbooks. This will be the first time that the middle school will have a co-curricular handbook. They have a lot of activities, so it would make sense that they do. With that, the committee brings forward a motion to approve the middle and high school co-curricular handbooks for 2021, 2022.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
All right, and lastly, we discussed a new co-curricular contract. So, the committee discussed advisors for the powerlifting program. Apparently, last year, there were twenty-four students who qualified for the national championship, so that's pretty exciting. For safety reasons, the administration is recommending that we have paid advisors for that position, so the committee brings forward a motion to have a head advisor contract and an assistant advisor position at twenty-five hundred and eighteen hundred respectively.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
That is all from committee.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, discussion in action to approve Germantown High School Palm and Dance overnight request, Mr. Stausland.
Yes, the Palm Group has asked the board to approve an overnight travel request that they have to Schaumburg, Illinois, this week actually, August 12th to August 14th, and this is a competition, and if they place at a certain level at this competition, they would ask the board to approve, and they qualify for the national competition in, at Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida, that they would ask the board to approve the trip February 16th through February 21st, 2022, if they qualify for the event.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the overnight travel requests for the Germantown High School Palm and Dance team to travel to Schaumburg, Illinois from August 12th to August 14th, 2021, and wish them the best of luck.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I hope they have a great trip and good luck. E, discussion in action, approve KMS SEL material, Mr. Stausland.
Yes, I do have Brandon Cole here, the middle school assistant principal, to speak on it if you have any questions. I believe Becky Whittiman is here as well, if you have questions, and, but I'm going to pass it to Mrs. O'Brien at this time.
Sure, and I'm going to hand it over to Brandon Cole and Becky Whittiman to just give a brief background on kind of the process of requesting these materials.
So, last year, the district had a district-wide SEL committee that used Jennifer Rogers as our consultant. There was both building and district-level work. KMS explored SEL curriculum due to the growing social emotional... KMS explored SEL curriculum due to the growing social emotional needs of our students that have been occurring for the past decade. We explored several different curriculums, and we selected Second Step because of its research and evidence base, that it's in line with other district initiatives, its seamless transition that it offers our K-8 students since the elementary is currently using that curriculum. It teaches twenty-four lessons approximately that are broken down into four units, mindset and goals, recognizing bullying and harassment, thoughts, emotions, and decisions, and managing relations and social conflicts. It focuses on the growth mindset of which our Germantown Way is founded.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve purchase of Second Step for grades six through eight. If the awarded grant that was applied for is received, the first year will be paid through the grant. If not, funds will be taken from the appropriate account for Kennedy Middle School.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yes, so, I'll just jump right in. We were given, we requested at the last meeting to see if we could get access to the course, or the courses for each grade, so that any one of us could go ahead and take a look in detail within the, at least in my experience, I had access to basically the PowerPoints and videos that were included, the lesson plans and the student handouts. To be somewhat blunt, I was a little nervous knowing the organization that prepared this material, that where the grant would be coming from, and I do have some concerns with regards to a couple of things. It's actually not necessarily a concern regarding CRT per se, but there is within the seventh grade material, Unit Two, under the recognizing bullying and harassment, there are some topics here specifically in Lesson Nine, what is sexual harassment? And so I do believe that it would be important to inform our parents of the topics that are being covered here, because there, I have an in-going sixth and eighth grader this year, so I missed the seventh grade piece, but under what is sexual harassment, things are referenced like sexual comments, being sent sexual pictures, touched in a sexual way. So the discussions that could occur during that particular lesson and that unit overall, I do feel the parents need to be aware of, because some of them could be quite detailed or explicit, or however you'd want to consider those topics. Just for, just for the audience, because I know it came up as a concern, I've, you know, I've got no problem saying that in Unit One of mindset and goals, for each one of them, because some of the videos are reused throughout each grade based off of the topic, and in the introductory unit of mindset and goals, there's a video that kind of kicks things off, and there is approximately three, four seconds that there's a Beal on March that's shown. But that's in the context of something of a three, three and a half minute video regarding goal setting, regarding how to break down your goals, how you can achieve your goals, those sorts of things. Now, it's, that video actually has nothing to do with goal setting, though. It's kind of that introduction. In the lesson plan, I'll mention this too, in Unit Two of the sixth grade session, recognizing bullying and harassment, nothing in the presentation for Lesson Eight, but within the lesson plan is part of some notes that teachers are presented with as far as what students might say or do or bring up, there is a mention of someone has more privilege. So there are, I would say there are elements in here that parents should be aware of, that we should be aware of if you happen not to get to that level of detail. But as far as the presentation that's prepared, as far as the teacher notes, as far as the student handouts, I didn't see a lot of that, actually, I didn't, other than those items that I mentioned, I didn't see any of those terms that are currently being used, that have been brought up in public comments, or anything that I, else that wasn't brought up that I'm aware of that refers to some of those things. So I appreciate the concerns that were brought up. I spent the time going through every single thing, watching every single video, and these are some of the things that I happen to have noticed of concern. If I take my board hat off for a moment, as a parent of an in-going sixth and eighth grader, this really, you know, the two, two of the three sessions deal with my kids, but putting off the board hat again, you know, the one thing that I think we might want to consider is, is just a parent notification regarding some of these topics.
And I will say, we do send out a weekly newsletter to parents, so when these topics are coming up, we can definitely put it out there, so we're informing their parents about what it is we're discussing, especially if it's something that can be controversial or sensitive.
And we've done that specifically in the past. We've had friends come in and of Washington County speak specifically on sexual harassment. And so I would send out an email to all those parents and give them the opt-out option, same as what we do with our Suicide Act Now curriculum. So those are specific, they're not even in like a weekly handout, they're specifically sent to those parents of those students who are receiving that curriculum in a timely fashion several weeks prior to those lessons being given.
There's actually one other thing, it was at the tail end of my notes. Eighth grade, Unit Four, Managing Relationships and Social Conflict. There is presented in a couple of lessons, a link to a website called loveisrespect.org, and as part of that, I didn't dig, I'll be honest, I didn't dig into each area of the website, but it does talk about dating, healthy relationships, personal safety, supporting others. There are some things that I think at least a certain segment of parents should be aware of, they should be aware of that site, and I elevate that concern for those parents because that website actually speaks to you, being able to double click on the escape button, which directs the user back to a Google page. So it, I understand if I, if I'm a kid, if I'm an eighth grader, and I have some questions I'm struggling with, and I go to this website and I start to look around, and I don't want mom or dad to look over my shoulder, I get that, but at the same time, I think we need to make sure that parents are aware that this website is referred to in this material, so that they can take the time to also review that, and that would be a perfect opportunity to encourage parents during that Unit Four to open up those conversations with their kids and open up their communication to try to bridge any gap that might exist there.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else?
Yeah, I appreciate Ms. O'Brien giving us access to that material. I did go through two of the grades, six and eight, saw a couple of things that Mr. Pollack mentioned, but to me, I don't see as big of a concern now that we've passed this. I think it would more come down to how things were being taught, not necessarily what was being taught, and I guess I don't necessarily have a problem with it going forward, you know, given some of the warnings that you've mentioned, certainly we need to notify parents when certain topics come up.
I did go through the material as well, and I want to thank all of you for sending that to us and giving us access. I went through the lessons, and I didn't see anything in there that was concerning to me as far as middle school aged children, I thought it was age appropriate. One thing I do think is that if we don't have kids that are socially, emotionally engaged in their learning, they are probably going to struggle, and we know that, you know, throughout a child's education, that that is a big problem. So I do believe that this is a necessary thing, and I do believe that it will be handled appropriately. I do like some of the lessons that are in there, and I think some are probably better than others, and I hope that we can pick and choose and come up with some good stuff. As far as what the audience is saying, the website is kind of hideous, and the funding is not exactly appropriate for me to take money from the teachers' union, but if they're going to give us money to help our kids, I don't know that I have a problem with that necessarily. So I think social emotional learning is important, I don't think it should be our entire focus in education, and I don't believe that it is, so I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and I appreciate you giving us the access to this and being able to vet it more appropriately, so.
Brian?
Bob?
I want to thank Tracy for doing that deep dive on the curriculum, and I just want to mention that we didn't have this conversation, I've been on the board for going on ten years now, we've never had a conversation like this on curriculum. We never got down to the five thousand foot level. Times are different right now.
Curriculum committee did.
No, I understand, I understand, but at the board level, we never did this, and it's, it's a breath of fresh air that we're having these conversations, we're taking time to discuss, to do a deep dive on the plans and everything. So I want to applaud everyone for elevating that, making this an issue, because things are different right now. When something comes forward from the administration, we're going to do our due diligence, and if we have to press the pause button, we're going to do that. If we have to say no, we're going to say no, but I think the board's done their due diligence on this, and I support this. So I want to thank the board for doing this.
Hey, eleven-year-old, whether you're casually having sex, just started dating, or in a good relationship, saying respect for boundaries is essential, eleven-year-old.
I was very, very rehearsed by you, just completely doing a house, you're not going to, nothing. I mean, maybe my school.
Well, this is a forward for sixteen.
Nothing. Okay, here, the high.
No, we're not, we're probably out of this.
So you guys, no waste time, family.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes. Moving on to item C, discussion in action regarding district academic standards for 2021, 22 school year.
That's, Mrs. O'Brien.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Sure, the academic standards for this year would be the same as what was approved in the previous year. There are no new changes to the standards, there are some that are being revised or in the process of being revised, but there are no additional standards than what was approved last year.
Okay, do we need a motion to approve the standards again this year?
Yeah, you have to do it.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the above identified notice of adopted student academic standards for the 2021, 2022 school year and posting of the notice as required.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Discussion in action to approve donation, Mr. Stousen.
Yes, I'd ask the board to consider approving a donation of five thousand dollars from the United Way of Greater Milwaukee in Waukesha County in support of summer and back-to-school youth engagement programming.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the donation and thank the donor for their generosity.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Close session, the Board will, Board of Education will entertain a motion to convene in a closed session pursuant to statute 1985-1E-G, Wisconsin statute says appropriate to discussion, negotiations, the plunket ratios are associates, contract, or possibly confer with legal counsel. The Board may take action in closed session if necessary, or appropriate to entertain a motion to reconvene into open session to take further action if necessary and appropriate, and/or to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Roll call.
Move we go into closed session pursuant to 1985-1E-G.
Second? Our roll call.
Medved.
Yes.
Barney.
Yes.
Reinerman, yes, Sotterberg.
Yes.
Loth.
Yes.
Gordon, excused. Pollack?
Yes.
We are in closed session at eight fifty-seven.
Thank you all for coming, drive home safely.